Okay, we're live and recording.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July working meeting of the city council. This is just, these are informal meetings, the working meetings. We're basically just gonna listen to the city council discuss some city business. It's not, it's not a formal meeting, there's no good in welfare, there's not public input. It's just basically you're listening to the council get some information about issues going on in the city and if we're having any discussion on that. So, I guess we can get going. The first thing, I guess we'll start with the IDA pilot for the Super Block. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, there's a new developer proposing to purchase the Super Block from High Star. It's Engel Berman. Engel Berman is proposing to build three buildings on the site, two condominiums with 100 units each, and an apartment building with 100 and, I'm sorry, 238 apartments. The developer is seeking a pilot on the rentals only. So, apparently, the IDA and the developer had their discussions, their meetings, negotiations, whatever they're called, and came to their conclusions and, a little bit to our surprise and angst, the city was not included in any of the discussions or, for that matter, even informed of the discussions. So, when, the first we heard from the IDA was a registered letter in the mail stating they were scheduling a public hearing. We contacted the IDA and said, "What the heck?" And we said, "You gotta give us some info. You gotta give us the, you know, some information about the financial impact to the city." And so, they provided, the developer provided us with a report that they did. They commissioned a company called Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees, which does, I guess I'd say, a high-level financial analysis of the project. It doesn't get into how it would impact Long Beach taxpayers. It's more high level of construction jobs that would create very high-level tax revenues overall, but not, not how it would impact the individuals down here in Long Beach. They, in turn, then give that to the IDA. The IDA then hires another consultant to analyze what the developer gave them and to say, "Yes, this makes sense. No, it does not make sense." That's a company called DNC, NDC, National Development Committee, I believe it stands for. They did their analysis. We asked the IDA for that. That was one of the main reasons, I believe, they postponed the meeting because we didn't have what we felt was any information we needed to be able to make an educated, take an educated position on this. So, once we got the information from them, we did our own financial analysis. Again, they don't do a financial analysis on how this impacts the Long Beach taxpayers. Part of the issue is, we're a little different than the rest of the county, being we are our own city. We don't use county services like many other parts of other villages and towns in Nassau. So, we're paying for more ourselves. So, instead of spreading a tax break across a million and a half county residents, we're only spreading it across 33,000 Long Beach residents. So, we, we met with our, talked with our financial advisor, CMA, gave them all the information, and our comptroller and CMA sat down and tried to come up with a methodology to determine how this project will impact the city financially, meaning would we be subsidizing the project? Would the city be coming out ahead on the project? So, with that, I'm gonna, so, most of that's just for background, so everybody knows how we got to tonight. So, with that, we have our representatives from CMA on the line who are gonna explain the analysis they did. And Dave, I think we have the spreadsheet that they put together, the analysis that we'll be able to put up.
Yes. May I please interject? I have a point of clarification.
Okay.
The organization that Engel Berman I went to is the National Development Council. So, what they do is that they review IDAs across the country. They're a national organization that provides development, finance, advisory services to municipalities across the country. They basically are the standard across the country to basically analyze all IDAs. So, what they gave was a third-party opinion on the project with some really good information so that we have a, you know, a bar of what our IDA application compares to other applications. So, it's not that they just hired somebody. Basically, the NDC is the organization across the country that analyzes IDA proposals. So, I wanted to make that clear.
Okay. And I guess one thing that's worth noting too is, NDC doesn't necessarily run independent numbers. They, they more analyze what the developer gives them. So, so that's-
Is that a fact or an opinion?
What's that?
Is that a fact or an opinion?
I believe that's a fact. So, so they, so that's why we wanted to do our own analysis to come up with, again, how it's gonna impact the Long Beach residents, which was not part of their analysis. So, with that, I guess it's, Tom is gonna speak? Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Tom and Margaret, you're both unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks, John. So, yeah, as John mentioned, last week, we had a meeting with Donna, Ina Resnick, the comptroller, and a few folks representing the development, or the developer. They revised some of their analysis, basically what portion of the city's budget would be applicable to this development that it would cause an increase to. What we then tried to do was sit down and isolate the portion of the city's expenses that were gonna be directly impacted by additional residents moving in. And what we came to, if, Dave, I don't know if you wanna, if you can share the analysis spreadsheet?
It's up there now.
Okay. So, what we found essentially was that for the early years, where the developer would be paying a pilot instead of the full assessed value of the rental properties, the expenses outweighed what the pilot portion for the city would be. However, on the condo side, where the residents would be paying their full assessments, that they were paying for more than what the additional expenses would cost the city. And taken in tandem, that the city in each year would be netting a positive impact. So, that the combination of the property taxes from the condos and the pilot payments on the rental property would outweigh the net impact of the expenses to the, to the city, or the increase to the expenses to the city. So, over time, as the pilot increases, and particularly after year 10, when there's a significant jump in the pilot payment, the costs come more in line with what the city is incurring. So, the pilot comes more in line with what the city's actually paying out. And as you can see from here, over the 25 years, we would expect a net positive impact to the city in the $30 million range, about $32 million. Now, this takes some liberties with the expenses of projecting out what that's gonna, that increase is gonna look like and how the property taxes will increase, but we think that it's a net positive to the city.
All right. You got anything else, Tom, or?
That's it for the, for the analysis. I know this was shared with the council last week. So, if there are any questions about our assumptions or the numbers that we're using, I'd be happy to answer them.
I wanna make note that Kieran brought up the company that did their analysis. The assumptions were wrong at the beginning, and Engel Berman's attorneys agreed that the assumptions were wrong because they used the entire budget for the expenses and all of the-
Did Donna stop talking, or we lost, I think we lost Donna?
Yeah, she, I think it's an internet connection.
Yeah. Okay, we lost Donna.
Stand by.
I think what Donna was getting at was, the original Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees study utilized the $117 million budget of the city to ascertain what the increase to the city's expenses would be. In our meeting last week, they came back and essentially said that that was incorrect, and we agreed with that assumption. So, when we did our analysis, we tried to isolate the departments that would see an increase in their budgets because of additional residents and avoiding any, anything that might be self-sustaining. So, departments like the beach that would also bring in additional revenue in it, as well as incur additional expenses and would, we tried, we avoided that and just focused on what the city would be paying for.
That's fine with me. That's Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees, that you made the, you know, what do you call it? Changes to their assumptions. I was actually talking about the different report from the National Development Council. So, again, I'm glad to see that the city and Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees revised the assumptions to make sure that everyone's on the same page, which is actually the whole point of the process. Thank you.
Well, Nelson Pope &amp; Voorhees did not revise their report. We revised it because we determined it was incorrect.
Which is why, which is exactly why I said, "That's great that we all work together to revise the process."
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, welcome back.
Okay, thank you.
So...
I'm sorry, John, can I just jump in?
Yeah, sure.
I know that we received, we received this, is this going to be available to the public? Well, it is public now, so that's-
Well, it's public now. I don't see why we can't, yeah, throw it up on the website or something. I, we just have to check the, the council.
I don't know if this is a final, final, is that correct?
But we, this is Margaret, we mark everything draft until instructed by you that you wanna make it a public document. And all we have to do is take the word "draft" off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause I think Tom and I are still going back and forth on something, so that's, that's all.
All right, but it looks like the bottom line is, if our assumptions are relatively accurate. So, the way to project the work is, the condos will pay full taxes as soon as they're built. The pilot is only for the rentals, so the condos will be paying taxes. It looks like for the first 10 years or so, the rentals, there is some subsidy of the rentals, but what the condos will pay in taxes far outweighs the subsidy that the pilot's giving to the rentals. So, the city, if we did this right, is never gonna be, come out on the short end of this deal in any given year. And we actually go up each year. So, so that seems to be the, based on the information we have and our analysis, it seems like this is a net positive to the city overall each year. So, anybody else got any other comments or questions, or? Okay, I think what, the next step is probably, probably talk to the IDA again and find out what their plan is for the rescheduled public hearing, when they're gonna do it, and what format they intend to do it in, whether it's gonna be, I'm guessing they're probably gonna do it as a phone meeting, but depending when they do it, maybe there's a way to see if there's some way to do it live. We'll have to talk to them about that. I mean, it's, it's their meeting, but we will try to make sure the Long Beach residents get their, get to have their say. All right. I guess, not hearing any other comments or questions, why don't we move on? What?
Is it, are we, are we finished with the CMA?
I guess. It seems like nobody's got any other questions. Are you hanging on to the end with something on that?
I just wanna say thank you, Tom.
Oh, okay.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, we appreciate it because, like I said, this is, this has been quite the learning experience about the IDA process. And you would think that they would do a financial analysis that impact, and the impact on the taxpayers in the local jurisdiction, and they, they really, it's, it doesn't seem to be part of the process, which is a little surprising to us. So, that's why we tried to do it ourselves. So...
Well, we're here for you, whatever you need us to do.
Yeah, and we very much appreciate your help. So...
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I think we got Mr. Brandis, Joe Brandis with us to give us an update on what's going on with the beach.
As you guys are all certainly aware, and judging by the number of phone calls, messages, and emails that the beach park has fielded since last weekend, our residents have beach crowding concerns. We share those concerns, and let's face it, the secret's out that non-resident daily beach passes are for sale once again in Long Beach. We've been meeting regularly this week, and by me, we, I mean, the city manager, Donna, John McNally, Phil Regone, the police commissioner, Paul Gillespie, the chief of lifeguards, and Tommy Kander, the superintendent of beach maintenance, to come up with ways to try and alleviate the crowding problems, obviously while simultaneously looking to fulfill the city's budget expectancies, keeping in mind the local economy and the boost that the local economy could use, but more importantly, doing so in a way that's safe for our residents and guests. Let's look at last Sunday first, and then I'll explain what we're implementing for the upcoming weekend. Not long ago, I was on record stating, or actually guaranteeing, that without the Long Island Railroad getaway package, there was no way that we'd ever reach the 50% capacity on those center-of-town beaches that we're selling passes at. We got a really, really good test on the 4th of July. We all kind of thought the benchmark was set, and I kind of thought my guarantee looked pretty good. But the numbers don't lie, and this past Sunday, we sold three times the amount of passes Sunday as we did on the 4th of July. Couple of things I think contributed to that, the, I mean, the overall contributor is the fact that as far as leisure, leisure recreation, we have no competition. You know, our boardwalk and our beaches are the only game in town. We've said it once, we've said it 100 times this week, there's no other distractions. There's no, there's no movie theaters, shopping malls, ballgames to go to, kids' tournaments to attend. Everything is kind of just moving at a snail's pace in terms of providing other outlets of recreation, whether it be amusement parks and the like. So, right now, everybody's focus is, well, the only place to go and get relief i- is on the shore. We got, even without the railroad getaway package, we got our first real train surge this weekend. I think the people in New York City finally realized that we need relief, and the easiest way to get it, and the safest place to get it without getting shut out, is Long Beach. Every beach east of us, from Jones Beach through Leo Boulevard, Town of Hempstead, Nassau County, they're, all of those beaches were closed, were closed by noon on Wednesday. So, anybody that came off the park where just continued to drive west, continued to drive west, continued to drive west until they reached Long Beach, where we don't have the ability to just shut down access like our counterparts to the east. Again, what goes into closing beaches is collaborative effort. It begins by monitoring what kind of activity in terms of vehicle traffic. And train crowd traffic starts at 10:30, or I start with the 10:43 in the morning, and we make evaluations on what we think is gonna take place. The lifeguards will patrol the sand and shoreline. We're in constant contact all day long, and when they deem a beach to be close to reaching capacity, I then go do visual, you know, analysis and try to determine that if, from the top, it looks the same way. And 99% of the time, we're in agreement, and we decide to shut down a beach. This past Sunday, we shut down Edwards and National first. What we start to do, once we do close down the beaches, we put a sign out, we post a special there, and we begin to redirect crowds to areas where the beaches are less crowded. We had a fair amount of success, probably till about 2 o'clock on Sunday, and then we realized that people weren't leaving the beach, and people weren't stopped coming. I mean, they showed up in droves and kept showing up in droves, you know, right up until 4, 5 o'clock when, when, when just about every beach in town was easily at the 50% capacity. What we plan to do this weekend, and this is, you know, a continual learning experience for us, to borrow John McNally's phrase from earlier in the week, you know, there's no playbook for this. Normally, it was just open the gates, sell passes, and let the city make some money and help, you know, our budget process. But now, we have this thrown in it, and what we're gonna try and do is, is the same procedures will work to, you know, to distinguish which beaches are reaching capacity, will redirect, but will also take additional measures of notifying the Long Island Railroad that they have to let their customers know that after a certain point, they run the risk of not being able to access our beaches. We've also established a transportation service. We're gonna use the trolley or the buses, and we will take people and move them to areas in town where the beaches are less crowded, you know, within those six beaches where we're selling non-resident beach passes. We're also going to set up two non-resident sales ticket booths at the street level, on Broadway at Laurelton Boulevard and at Riverside Boulevard, where people have access to pull up, buy the passes, and then spread out through town and utilize the daily passes so it's not a complete influx in the center of town. Again, these are the steps for this weekend. Our hope is that, that last Sunday wasn't an anomaly, and it's not the norm, but we're preparing as if it is the norm, and, and we're gonna continue to make whatever adjustments we have to make to make sure that the beach is safe for the, for the residents, for our guests, and that we're in a position to help the local economy, but not do it at the expense of anybody's help. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Joe. So, so is the pattern, basically, I know we were having, early on, the West End and the East End beaches were hitting capacity the earliest, the 50% capacity. If it's the train crowd that's coming in, so they're filling up probably Edwards, National, Riverside, that center area, is towards like, you know, the Western End, like towards Grand and Lafayette, or the other end, if you're at Lincoln or something, are those beaches still staying a little on the thinner side, or is it just pretty much even all across now?
It's busy everywhere. You know, Chief Gillespie was joking around. I mean, where we've had most of our problems, as you stated, were with crowding, was in the West End. And last Sunday, for whatever reason, the West End wasn't an issue for us at all. Down in the East End, Neptune, Pacific, you know, a lot of the locals, for whatever reason, I mean, remember, the water was closed because of the rough surf, whether they just elected not to go to the beach that day. Roosevelt, those beaches down east were relatively quiet compared to the center of town. We have an issue at Monroe, and I think Monroe's going to be almost a continuous issue just in the fact that, you know, the jetty at Monroe is one that wasn't part of the Army Corps project. It didn't get redone. There's very, very little usable space in the Monroe area. That was probably the first one we closed. That was closed before noon last Sunday. We do take into consideration the locals that live there, particularly the senior citizen community, when they come to Monroe Beach, and the beach is closed. So, we're probably gonna be a little quicker on the draw in that area to ensure that if people that are residents that live in the area, they may not have the, you know, the physical ability to walk a beach away to enter, that we can safely put them on the beach as well. So, again, the body of work that we have is still pretty small. You know, let's see what happens this weekend, and if we're back to the drawing board, we're back to the drawing board. But we don't wanna just throw in the towel and say, you know, "We're not selling passes to non-residents this, you know, this early in the game." You know, let's face it, we could use the money, but we don't have enough of a book yet to tell whether we can expect this every single weekend, or it's gonna be closer to something we experienced on the 4th of July.
All right. Well, it's supposed to be in the 90s, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and so, I guess we'll find out. It's, if we're gonna get it, it's gonna be this weekend. I think tomorrow's supposed to be a little sketchy, but otherwise-
I think that comes right back.
But right, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it's, it's gonna be interesting. Anybody else got any, anybody got any questions for Joe, or?
The one other thing I would, the one other thing I would add, John, is particularly what we're seeing in the West End, when we've, you know, Joe mentioned that it was not a major problem this past Sunday, when we were experiencing a little bit of a rush in the middle of town. You know, I'll reiterate what we said at the last council meeting, that the West End, we're seeing overcrowding, and no small part of that is large groups, where we've seen firsthand that, you know, a group of 10 goes on, and then one person collects the other nine's tickets and goes back out to the street. So, we are working to be really aggressive, to really do beach sweeps. So, we'll warn anyone out there, if you, you know, not only is this, you're getting kicked off the beach if you're on there without a pass, but you're getting a fine as well. So, we need to make sure that that practice really starts to settle down, and we are gonna be aggressive with it again this weekend.
Okay, and I guess maybe Phil could touch on that a little bit when he talks about what the specials are doing with, in that area.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
I have a question for Joe Brandis. If you could just explain-
I have a question for Joe Branch. If you could just explain, uh, the process where the non-resident daily beach passes were sold before and what has changed going forward? He mentioned, um, Riverside and Laurelton, is that going to be adding to what's existing places that are sold or this is like a, uh, a change of something? That's question number one. And, uh, the method of communication, when you have to close a beach pass or direct a beach and direct people to go to a different area, is Joe in touch with Phil, in touch with the specials, in touch with the beach park, uh, ticket taker supervisors, just so they can move people to where they should pay to go on the beach? I just want to understand that process.
Okay. Like, I'll touch on the first one. Uh, the first question was the locations that we added. We added two locations at the street level, uh, at Laurelton and Riverside Boulevards. We do sell passes at both of those areas on the boardwalk. The thought process here was, uh, let's take Laurel, Laurelton, for example, people can pull up in a car, buy a, 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 a non-resident daily beach pass or, you know, uh, several non-resident daily beach passes and they don't have to be concerned with going on the beach right there. Uh, similarly at Riverside Boulevard, if somebody walks up the boardwalk ramp, goes all the way to the, to the ticket booth, uh, and buys their beach pass, they're going to want to go on the beach there. So i- if, if we can have them, uh, purchase the p- the passes ahead of time, it now allows them to use that pass anywhere in town. So it helps thin out a little bit and spread out to some of the beaches. Plus, there's a communication component to that, too. We have, you know, beach park personnel at those booths that can direct people, hey, listen, you know, the, the booths at Edwards and National are, are closed at, uh, uh, at capacity levels at this point. You may want to try driving down a few blocks to the east or the west, uh, where we, the reports that we're getting is, at those beaches are certainly less crowded. So that, that's the idea behind it, not making people come off the boardwalk and, and, and then have to, uh, either board a trolley or, or go back to their cars because they can't get on the beach where they purchased that pass. Um, as far as the method of communication, uh, it's literally cell phones, radios, uh, y- you name it. I- i- it normally begins, uh, with, uh, a member of the lifeguard patrol, uh, whether it's Chief Gillespie or Richie Barowski or one of the other officers on the beach park, uh, will make a call and say, hey, Joe, take a look at Monroe. I think it's getting pretty crowded. Uh, I immediately go down to Monroe. I take a look, guys, we're in agreement here. Um, we're going to need to shut this down. I then in turn notified the beach park office, their supervisors, uh, my first calls to Phil Regona or the, the special supervisors to get specials patrolled there. And then once we get everybody in place, a beach park supervisor, a police special, and normally myself, uh, just to kind of alleviate the initial, the initial, you know, disruption in service, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll man it, we'll put the sign out, we, we direct people in opposite ways. Um, this past Sunday, we had instances where I actually went up to the train station and was directing people not to walk straight down the block because those beaches were closed. I, you know, walk two blocks to the west, Magnolia is empty. Uh, there's a beautiful beach, you know, three blocks west of here. There's bathrooms, there's this, there's that, you know, try to explain whatever amenities we have to offer, you know, but there has to be an alternative for these people. Once they've exited the train, pay for a commute from Manhattan a- and we want to try and provide that for them.
Right. Thanks, Joe. I just couldn't figure out why National and Edwards filled up first if the, if the sales were taking place on Riverside and elsewhere. I
We do sell, we sell from Laurelton Boulevard to Long Beach Road, all of those ticket, uh, booths sell passes. It's not two locations. I should have clarified that. There's
No, you probably did. You probably did. I was just figuring it out. Um, National and Edwards. So it seems to me a lot of people from the train were walking straight down either Edwards or National and that filled up first. Okay.
Yeah, you've got, look, you've got the foundation block parking and the train crowd. That takes care of Edwards, Riverside and National Boulevard by itself.
Right. Okay. And the last question, Joe, the method of payment, are these people paid by ATMs, credit cards, cash?
Cash and credit.
What's that?
Cash and credit.
Yeah, I just, how is the Wi-Fi systems in that kind of signal on the boardwalk?
Not that great.
Yeah, I figured.
Uh, no, it's a challenge, you know, and, and Dave Frazier could probably speak to it better than I can, but, but it's a challenge, you know? Uh, there are days where, where, where it craps out. There are days we have, you know, when there's a, a, a heavy influx of, of, of cellphone use at the beach and it's that crowded, there, there's delays. It's not perfect, uh, but i- it's working.
Okay. I figured you'd have some kind of issue with that crowd. Thank you, John.
No problem.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Um,
Hi, it's Liz. I just have one quick question, Joe, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Um, do you have any, um, I know that administration is working, uh, hand in hand with the governor on his updates, but I've heard some residents that are curious about our spray parks and the ice arena. If, do you have any anticipation on that or we're just waiting for the governor to give the next ruling?
I'll give you the, the, the schedule. It's on my calendar and, I mean, look, we, we've erased them and made contingency plans as, as we've gone along, but right now we're actually making tremendous strides. The sprinkler parks will be open tomorrow. Uh, that'll be, uh, something a lot of people will be, be very happy about ahead of the, uh,
That's great. Yes, thank you.
expected heat this weekend. Um, men's league softball at the rec will begin next week. Uh, we have a couple of, uh, uh, youth programs that we're going to put in place, uh, probably beginning or starting around August one, and the game plan right now is for the ice arena to open on or around August first as well. So we're making strides finally and, uh, now we just have to follow through with them and, and hope that we don't suffer any setbacks.
Thank you. I appreciate that update.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else have any, uh, questions for Joe?
I think just the one other thing that I would add is, uh, we are going to be trying to push people to the Long Island Railroad Parking Garage, uh, this weekend. We're going to have electronic signs out and other directionals. So when folks are coming in from out of town from their cars, hopefully we're getting them off some of the residential and we're giving free parking at the Long Island Railroad Parking Garage. So, you know, it's one of the other things that we're tinkering with to see how effective that might be so we can reduce the impact on our residents.
Okay. Well, that's a good thing because we've kind of underutilized that garage. So, um, that, that'll be a good thing. Anybody else got anything related to the beach? All right. Uh, why don't we move on then to, uh, Phil, uh, Regona, our acting police commissioner. I think he, uh, wants to talk about some enforcement issues.
Okay, Phil, you're unmuted. Okay, I got you. Uh, good evening, everybody. First, I could start off by saying, Joe, that was, uh, that was terrific, your report, and you're doing a terrific job and, uh, you really are doing outstanding piece of work out there on the beach. Um, I'll be as concise and succinct as possible to try and fit into the eight fifteen timeframe we have. Um, all I really want to speak about is obviously we've been getting a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, uh, a lot of issues raised about, uh, social distancing and face coverings. So my line is always facts before acts. Let's know what we can and can't do before we start to, um, answer questions from our residents and from the public. So as far as the, um, our governor's state, uh, executive order in, in regards to wearing, uh, face coverings, you are not mandated to wear them. I wish that everyone did, but you are not when you're outside mandated to wear a face covering. So if you can socially distance, you should have it on you, on your person. If you can't socially distance within six feet, then you should have a face covering on. The issue on the boardwalk is this, if you are closer than six feet apart and you don't have a face covering on, the special officers are the primary law enforcement officers, certainly during the day on, on our boardwalk. They do not have the authority to arrest someone and it is an arrestable offense, by the way. It's not a simple summons. It's, it's a be misdemeanor and it's an arrestable offense. I don't think our goal as a city is, is to lock up Mr. O'Brien, Mrs. Jones for being four and a half a we- feet away from somebody without their face covering on. I don't know if that's a good, good look and a good optic. So they know and they're directed to be good ambassadors on the boardwalk and when they see people that are gathering, that are clustered, that are on the ramps, to advise them politely and respectfully, you need to separate. And they're reminded of that daily at their old call. As far as our police officers go, um, they can arrest somebody for that and we've only had, I believe fortunately, one instance in the West End last month where we had to issue an appearance ticket and do the arrest paperwork on a large house party where there were a hundred and twenty people, uh, filming, I believe it was some type of video and they were, literally it was a real hazardous condition. In that instance, we had to take action, but I don't think the goal is to do that. The goal is to have voluntary compliance. The goal is to, uh, advise and, and be an ambassador, tell people that you have to separate and that's what we're doing. Um, there's an issue about the police officers and specials with masks on. They are not required to have their masks on and in fact, it's a very, very difficult to perform your job with a, I'm saying mask, a face covering on. If you're on the boardwalk for eight hours walking back and forth, it is really difficult to have a face covering over your nose and mouth. They are mandated, as are police officers also, to have it on their person. If they have to encounter or approach, speak to someone, when their distance is going to be less than six feet apart, well, then they're required to put it on. They know that. So you get, you get some complaints about why aren't the police officers or the specials wearing a face covering? Because it's really not a safe thing to do if they can distance and it certainly is not healthy for them in the, in the, uh, instances that they're in, certainly on the boardwalk and for police officers on patrol. But they do know and there is an order that they have to have it on their person to put on if they have to, uh, address somebody in closed quarters. The violations on the boardwalks that we have, and we get a lot of questions about, and I'll just go a little aside here, is in regards to the other violations, uh, that's the, the, the bikes on off hours, uh, the electric bikes, the skateboards, uh, smoking, um, and we're very strict on that and the specials do have the authority to issue municipal code summonses, obviously, you know, that for that. And they've issued over five hundred summonses for those violations. In regards to beach crowding, they're out there. We, we have our rangers and our ATVs, the ranger is like a golf cart on the, uh, on the beach and the ATVs in the West End and the center of town. And what, what do they do? They go to different groups. They check for the, their season passes or their daily pass to make sure they have them because people are passing them off and we socially distance the groups. When we do that, Joe, Chief Gillespie can then see, okay, we've, we've distanced the groups apart. Is there enough sand to say it's safe? And as Joe said before, very eloquently, we do it in conjunction with each other. It's a phone call away, you know, what do you think about Minnesota? What do you think about Edwards? What do you think about National? And we all put eyes on it and make a decision. Um, and lastly, I'll just say, as far as beach patrol goes, because the nighttime, six o'clock comes and goes and after six, prior, well, prior to June twenty-sixth, when I started this position, the, I, apparently there was no beach patrol with police officers at night. Um, I didn't really understand that, but every night of the week now, we have police officers patrolling the beach after hours. I, it's the most necessary thing you could have, uh, keep people safe, to stop violations, to stop large groups from gathering, to stop all the quality of life violations that are going on. So we do put two police officers out, east and west, and we have four specials out there. So after six, the enforcement doesn't end, it continues and we're out there and the summons we're writing are tremendous. And lastly, I'll say, as far as the West End goes, um, and the center of town, our licensed premises, we put out every Friday, Saturday and Sunday night, um, extra bicycle patrols with a supervisor, police officers, um, and they're only, and their mission it really is to just make sure that the licensed premises, the restaurants, the commercial businesses are complying with the law, that they're doing what they should do, that there aren't people outside creating problems and, uh, and to issue summonses they are. We also put out a, um, a special Friday, Saturday and Sunday day to just do parking enforcement. And the parking enforcement is for municipal lots that we have, that if you don't have a permit, certainly in the West End, you can't park at. And we've learned, or I've learned, that there's plenty of people coming from out of town and say, all right, there's four of us, we'll park i- i- in the lot, uh, the, uh, the resident only lot. And if we get a ticket, it's fifty dollars. Well, the four of us will whack that ticket up. It's the best parking that we've ever got, the twelve dollars each. So I started a task force and now we have a tow truck down west on Friday and Saturday night that if you're an out of towner, no permit, you're parked in one of our lots, you're parked in front of a fire hydrant, you don't just get a summons. We tow your car, we bring it back to the station house and it's a four hundred and seventy-five dollar night for you. And the city generates a lot of revenue from that, but the goal really is to make sure that they don't park there and take the spots away from the residents. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, Phil, I got one. I guess since you were on the theme of, of parking, uh, I think I had told you, we were, uh, we've been getting some reports about the, uh, Allegria has been valet parking in public parking spots. So they're charging people and then parking them, taking up public spots. Um, is that something we could, uh, uh, just, uh, look into and see if that is in fact true and, uh, have a little, uh, little chat with them about it?
Yeah, we already have, uh, John, so I got your memo. I went down and spoke to their events manager, Geraldine, and I put out a memo, um, to our traffic division and our, uh, certainly our overtime officers, the officers coming on the weekend, uh, it's in their list of, uh, job descriptions. So they, that's something they have to address at the beginning of their tour. So we're going out and watching them and the condition does exist, by the way. There are some complaints that I believe, uh, don't have any, uh, weight to them. That's a complaint that certainly is valid and, uh, we're addressing it as we speak.
Okay. That's good. Because A, they're charging people to park in free spots, A, and B, it's they're taking spots away from residents and the public. So, um,
Yeah, Joe, we can't conf- we can't confirm the charge and, but we, I can confirm that they're parking cars in the street where they shouldn't. So it's, it's certainly a condition that our, uh, our post call knows about and is addressing. And I, uh, I, I, I put the, the events manager on notice about it.
Okay. Yeah, I know on weekends I've been seeing they have a sign out that says beach parking, fifty dollars, which, uh, I guess that's pretty steep, but I guess if someone's, I guess if someone's willing to pay it, um, but if, that's fine as long as they're using their own internal garage.
Correct.
I just have one other question. Um, early on, we had, uh, received a lot of, you know, complaints about fireworks. Obviously it's national. It seems to have quieted down. Do you think the fireworks issue that was going on was temporary? Because I know I was, I heard between Long Beach Road and let's say Edwards Boulevard on the beach and in the boardwalk, eleven o'clock at night, two o'clock in the morning, um, there were certain issues and then there were fireworks all around town. I know it's hard to police it, but in my opinion now, I think it's had a drastic reduction because I haven't heard any complaints. Did you find that as well?
Mike, I'm honored of that daily and you're absolutely correct. Um, the fireworks calls in my thirty-four years working here, I've never seen a July or a summer with the amount of calls that we got for firework and fireworks. Um, and obviously it's been statewide. I, i- a whole host of reasons for that, the pandemic, all the, all the fireworks shows being canceled, people wanting to see fireworks, it's festive. I mean, I could do a sociological study on it, but I'm sure there's a whole host of reasons why we've seen the influx of, of, um, illegal of illegal fireworks that we've seen. But as far as now it's lessening tremendously. Our calls have gone down from probably 20, 25 calls for service a night to three or four. So it's, and I think as the summer progresses a little bit more, you're going to see it almost go to zero.
The last question, thank you, Phil. The last question is, you know, we like to change behavior. Behavior is changed by, you know, a punishment. A punishment is usually a fine, a fine is an appearance, and then you got to pay a fee, or you have to do some kind of service. It's great that a lot of violations or summonses are written. Do you find, or do they find that a lot of these people are, I hate to use this term, but they're not knowledgeable about the way they should conduct themselves in Long Beach? Or they're the type of people that say, I don't mind, catch me if you can, because I'll get a ticket and, you know, I really don't care. You know, I won't do anything with it. Do you have any idea about that at all?
You know, my opinion on that, Mike, is that negative reinforcement is huge, right? So if you believe that there is an omnipresence of police, and you believe you're going to get caught, and you believe you're going to get served with the summons, and that there's going to be a monetary impact to you for that antisocial or illegal behavior, whether it be urinating in the street, open alcohol, I believe that stems and stops that action. And I try my best to drill it in to the police officers that you need to be out there and you need to be issuing the summonses. I met with our judges also, and I think we've talked about it, Mike, in regards to adjudication of summonses. And I'm certainly not a judge, and I'm in no position to tell one of our city court judges what to do. But I voiced my concern about summonses being adjudicated, possibly without the funds they should be, because I've heard it. I don't know that factually, this is what I've heard. And I spoke to both our very esteemed judges about my feelings on holding the person who commits these quality of life violations feet to the flames. Because if you're going to do this in our city, if you're going to urinate in the middle of Beach Street, if you're going to walk around with a beer in the middle of Park Avenue, well, you know what? Go back to Franklin Square and do it, but not here. And if you do it, and you get caught, and you get a summons, you really should be held accountable. And both Judge Miller and Judge Klein were in agreement with me. So we'll see how it goes moving forward.
Great, thank you, Phil.
You're welcome, Mike.
All right, and just wanted, since you mentioned quality of life, just, not that we have to talk about it, I just want to bring it up, that we've been getting complaints again. I know Mike is in particular, but I've been getting them too about Mio Posto. So we might want to pay some attention to them, speaking of quality of life and reinforcing what being a good neighbor is.
It's not, it's a post-condition. They're required to go three times during their tour to Mio Posto to make sure that they're not operating. They don't have a cabaret license, I've looked into it, John. Cabaret license mandates that if you have more than two people playing music, you're in violation. Because that's what I've heard, the complaints I've heard, that they have a band or live music. And I don't know if it's more than two, but the police officers certainly do. And if they do, they'll, I said it's a zero tolerance, they'll get a summons, their table's on the sidewalk on Beach Street, loud noise. We've got numerous complaints too, and we're addressing it, and it's come out in a memo to our Western Post offices.
Okay, great, thanks.
John, for making.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else got anything for Phil? All right, thanks, Phil.
You're all welcome, thank you.
And let's see, I guess next, let's hear from Simone. I guess got some stuff with the MLK to discuss.
Okay, good evening. Essentially, the MLK Center is around and is supposed to provide services for residents. Now, currently, the lease that we have with the existing not-for-profit that has been working in the building had expired quite some time ago, and they're operating in a holdover situation. So we have been approached by a couple of not-for-profits that have expressed some interest in, you know, potentially being able to provide additional services than we're currently being provided there. So we have been talking about the idea of putting out a request for either proposals or qualifications for qualified not-for-profits that would be able to provide services to the community out of the building. And we think that this might be, you know, a great way to go. We could have more than one organization in there, which we currently have one. We could have more than one providing various different types of services. And this is pretty much something for discussion, I guess, with the council as to what direction you'd like to go in with respect to, you know, the current handling of the MLK building and just the services to the community.
This is Karen. Can you talk a little bit about the history of the building? I thought it would be, it was a city building that was built in the 1960s?
I'm not completely familiar with the history of the building. I think you are correct that it was built somewhere around that time. And there has, as I said, been a very long-term lease with a not-for-profit. As part of that lease, that lease expired, but as part of that, you know, certain conditions did require building maintenance and upkeep and repairs to be done by the not-for-profit that was occupying the building. However, it's my understanding from Tommy Cantor and, you know, some of the other building maintenance people that we are still providing, I guess, repairs and updates, and a number of parts of the building have fallen to somewhat of a disrepair. And it's fallen back on the city to do these repairs, even though that wasn't necessarily the original, what was originally contemplated. So we are incurring that cost.
Simone, can you clarify that we're actually doing repairs that were actually designated by the lessee, should have taken care of? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because, yes, we are, and the lease has expired, as I said. So now we're in a holdover situation, which is a slightly different legal relationship. But we have been taking on the responsibility, because it still is our building, you know, releasing it out, but we are still responsible.
So by responsible.
Well, go ahead.
By responsible, are you saying that we are taking on the financial obligations to maintain the facility, even though the lessee is required to?
Yes, because of our insurance and liability obligations. If the work is not being done, it's still our property. So we're still liable in the event that something happens. So I, it's my understanding that we've been doing it in order to maintain compliance, because certain things haven't been done.
And as far as my current understanding, there are some capital improvements that are required for the building, is that correct?
I believe so, but, I mean, DPW could speak better to that than I can.
Okay, and have we had a recent appraisal on the building?
I don't believe we've had a recent appraisal. As far as I know, we have not, and we probably could. Do that through a tax assessor's office?
Well, we have, we use companies to do appraisals. And no, we have, Karen, had an appraisal. At least, I haven't seen one, have heard of one on that particular building.
So it sounds like this is a really good opportunity to make sure that we understand the values of all of our buildings across the city and make sure that our appraisals are current, regardless, again, for all of our buildings. And then maybe see what the capital requirements are from the MLK Center, because I thought there were some issues.
There are some.
If I remember, I think there's something with the roof.
Yeah, there are some issues with the building. We will talk to Tommy Cantor and see if we can get an appraisal, and that's a very good idea to get the, get all of our buildings appraised as we can so we know what the values are. But the reason Simone is bringing up MLK is because MLK, the building itself from the city, the city has a commitment to the community there to bring in services. And so we've had other nonprofits come in and say, we can offer services to that community, several different types of services. We do have a lease, and so one of Simone's tasks was to look at the lease, to find out we're in compliance, where we are, and find out what the board's pleasure is with the building. Do you want to go out for an RFP to see who else can bring in services? It's not to say that the agency is there now would be, they would have their chance as well to bid or send in something for the RFP. It also means that there might be more than one agency in. We have to take that community, that section of the community, and see what services they need to make sure that if the city is saying that the MLK building is a building that will provide services to that community, that we're hearing the residents. And that we're also in compliance, because as you well know, that we have RFPs out for the Magnolia Center and for the ICE Arena. We're bringing in additional people.
I wasn't aware of that. So it sounds like that we're going across the board. We're doing RFPs for all of our facilities, all of our services, to make sure that we get, we serve the residents as best as we can. So it sounds like, it sounds like this is the right thing to do. It's a due diligence process, and I'm glad you're bringing it up. So thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we look at having, if we have other buildings? I don't know if we own, when I say we, I mean the city, has stake in the West End. I know it's the Western Community Center. Do we rent that from the school? Is that part of our building? As well as, as Karen said, the other buildings around the town? How can we best find out what each neighborhood wants? Do we go to the civics? Do we go to Concerned Citizens of North Park? Do we go to Wenka and ask for a survey? Do we get a committee together? Just, there are vocal voices in every part of the city. I'd like to hear from the people that don't talk so much and see what they want. What are their, what are their needs?
We could try to come up with something. We let myself and the team work together on how, where we have buildings that can service the community, figure out what's the best way during this era, this pandemic era, to get the information we need.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Simone, you had mentioned, you wanted us to consider a request for proposal, because there's only one type of service that's being offered currently. But there may be parties interested in offering multiple services. Would that be answered? Okay.
Yes, well, it could be, it could be a range. I mean, there's, you've been approached by other not-for-profits that have basically indicated that they could provide other services than are currently being served for that community that they do need. So we're basically saying we should probably put out a request for proposals or qualifications to, you know, get back proposals and determine what, you know, assess the need of the community. And then if we can have more than, I mean, it's always better to provide more services than less to the community. So if we can do that, that would be good.
I just want to, just want to mention that there is a rich history about the MLK Center in Long Beach. And there was a recent, I think it was a professor that actually wrote an editorial in the Long Beach Herald talking about the importance of the MLK Center to our community. Therefore, I would just hope that we are cognizant of that history and that we make sure that we stay as close as we can to the original mission and intent of that location.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Like Liz said, I think community input and their needs, and if it's not being provided for, and that should be incorporated in this soon-to-be future RFP, so collectively, all bases are covered. The one question I have, is there somebody or some group or some organization that wanted to come in to help distribute, whether it's like a vaccine testing site or something, where they couldn't because of a conflict? No? Okay.
As I'm aware of.
All right, so it sounds, it sounds like this is basically an issue of potentially looking or finding out if there are complimentary services in addition to what's already being provided to the community to give the community even more services that perhaps other organizations might be able to bring in. So it sounds like it might be a case where, I guess this is, I call it, it sounds like we're in an information gathering phase right now. So this is more finding out what other services might be available, who might be able to provide them. And so it might be a case where, some point down the line, there could be several organizations operating out of MLK, each providing different services.
Would that be similar to something like the Magnolia Center? There's the senior program, there's, I know there are a couple of things that ran out of there, there's the art program.
And the Magnolia Center, the only thing that's in the RFP for the Magnolia Center is the daycare. And they would take over all, just all the daycare. With, we discussed putting out the RFP for the MLK Center. It's so, Karen, we can do everything that you talked about. We are hearing what the community is saying. And that the people that want to come into the center will be able to pay the city. The city has not collected rent for that facility in quite a while. And so that we will have, and whether we use, we decide to put out a RFP or not, the current contract has to be renegotiated. And what we're doing, just not for contracts with buildings, but if we have contracts with vendors, we are now going back out to RFP to see if we can get some of our goods and services at a cheaper price. So it's not that we're picking on any one particular building. We're doing this overall in the city where we can, where we can save money, and where, you know, we can bring more services.
And to President Bendo's point, there could be more than one nonprofit that operates out of the MLK Center. And that, you know, this is a win-win for the community and for the taxpayers. So I'm really, thank you very much for bringing this up. And I'm really glad to hear about all the process that you're going through, Donna, with your, with your team about reviewing every contract to make sure that, you know, we're doing our job and getting the most for our residents. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I will share that with the team, because it's just not me. It takes a team of us to do it, so I will definitely share it with the team.
All right, so in the interest of time, because we're already coming up on 8:13 here. So it sounds like, all right, let's see what, let's get some information and see what the best way to proceed is. And we'll probably have to work with the community to make sure their needs are being met. With that, I guess, I guess we're going to hear from Commissioner Morando now about the, some of the canal bulkhead properties.
John, I just unmuted you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I had put together a list of the 30-plus projects that are going on, capital projects. Skimmed it down to about 10 pages. I can skim through that quick, because I know Councilman Delory had a few questions. He sent over an email. And then I was going to cover the issue with the public property on the canals where private property owners have taken over and built various things on it that have just recently been removed for the bulkhead project. So if you want me to do that, I'll try to go through these, the summary. You all have the summary, I think, City Manager Gaiden sent it out to everyone. So.
Thank you.
So I'll further skim through it and try to give you the highlights. In terms of road overlays, in 2019, we did, 21 road segments were overlaid with asphalt. 11 of them were at the cost to the city at $654,930. The remaining 10 were paved by contractors employed by either National Grid or PSCNG. We had made a work. worked out with PSMG rather than just paying road permits and just having to do trench repair, that they would do curb-to-curb paving at their, their expense. So as a result, we've gotten a lot more segments of uh, of overlays on a lot of roads. Uh, and there are about ten more roads that National Grid is working on now that will be overlaid this year. For this year, we have about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in the capital budget for additional overlay projects. And uh, Joe Fabrizio and Brooke Anderson are out presently uh, reviewing all the past uh, grades on streets to determine uh, which, which roads would be the most likely to be uh overlaid. Uh, reconstruction of Lifeguard Headquarters and Comfort Stations at Neptune in New York. Uh, yesterday, uh, they placed the bathroom at New York Avenue. Uh, they were shipped in by truck. Crane was put in place. We had to shut that end of the board deck walk down for one day. Uh, that bathroom is in place now as along with the uh, what they'll call the West Lifeguard Crew Courts attached to the building. Uh, Chief Gillespie looked at it. He really liked the way it came out. Uh, now they're working on hooking up the plumbing, hooking up the sewer water and um, and electric, and that bathroom will be in operation by the end of July. Uh, next week on Tuesday, they will be doing the same thing. They'll be setting pads down at Neptune. And uh, they will uh, locate the crane there and the three pieces of that building will come in, uh, which is the bathroom for Neptune and will include the uh, East Crew uh, Lifeguard Headquarters. Uh, that should be in operation by the end of July also, maybe by the first week of August. If it's not, the contractors agreed to pay for the bathroom, continue with the temporary bathroom at that location. Uh, Lifeguard Headquarters is still being constructed off-site and is a little bit behind schedule and probably will not be installed till September or October this year, which will then give the Lifeguards all winter to put the building together, put all the different equipment they're going to need inside in terms of radios and communication. The North Shore Bulkhead Project is moving along very rapidly. Uh, West Bay is completely done. The concrete cap has been installed. The fencing is back up and people are starting to reinstall their docks. There is still some painting on the waterside that the contractor is working around high tide and low tide to, to paint the uh, the outside of the existing steel bulkhead. Uh, the Huron Canal is substantially complete. Just waiting for check valves for the weep holes. And uh, in addition, uh, some additional soil on the grass areas. And the contractor is working on the Doyle, Doyle Street now for that canal. Uh, and is more than halfway through with just a bulkhead. Uh, Drainage Improvement Project, this is a GOSA project. Uh, it's going to be a five million dollar project. This will take care of National West Park Avenue to, to the Boardwalk. Uh, West Park, uh, rather National Boulevard, West Park Avenue and Boardwalk, West Park Avenue from New York to Nevada. Vine Street between Long Beach Road and Park Place. And this will include a pump station at Tennessee. Uh, there needed to be a permanent generator there, which I think would have become unsightly for the residents that live on Tennessee. So what we're going to do, we've made a recommendation, and uh, this is in GOSA's hands right now, to locate the backup generator at the Indiana Firehouse and then uh, trench the power lines over to the pump station. A pump station is obviously underground. Uh, Office of Emergency Management is complete. However, we will be asking on the agenda for July twenty-first to increase the purchase order to the contractor. That purchase order or those additional funds that were required for some issues that came up have already been approved by GOSA and the funds are available from GOSA. So there won't be an outlay for the city. But because it exceeded the original purchase order, we'll need a resolution and that will be on the agenda, council's agenda for July twenty-first. The Critical Infrastructure Protection Project. As you know, that project came in uh, quite over, over uh, the estimate uh, by about eleven million dollars. We worked with the low bidder and reduced his cost by two and a half million dollars. We've put in a revised uh, request to DISHIS in the amount of thirty-three and a half million dollars uh, to get that project going. Uh, DISHIS is very sure that it'll be approved by FEMA based on the uh, cost.
This is, can you just explain the acronyms, DISHIS for everyone?
Department of Homeland Security in New York State, I'm sorry. Uh, and uh, what they're waiting for is we're presently working with Nassau County on their multi-durisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And once that plan is done, uh, which is anticipated to be the end of this year, then DISHIS will uh, then FEMA will approve the additional money and uh, we will award that project. Reconstruction of Boyd, north of Pine Street. That was going to be a complete road reconstruction project. Uh, however, before we could finish the design work for the water mains, the street lighting, the, the curbing, uh, the sewer main became very bad there and collapsed. But we put out an emergency bid, which the council approved. Uh, and the store was, the sewer line has been replaced and was completed by, by July ninth. Uh, so we're expecting now construction on the remaining stuff to be scheduled for March of two thousand twenty-one. Rehabilitation of the Long Island Railroad Garage. Uh, just to give a little background, the Long Island Railroad Parking Garage was built and turned over to the city in the nineteen nineties. The city is responsible for maintenance and repairs to the structures. In response to repeated complaints regarding deterioration of the facility, the city retained the services of Walker Engineer through an RFP process to evaluate and subsequently prepare plans for restoration of the facility. Walker Engineering prepared a condition report for the facility. The report documented the existing conditions and described repairs needed at the facility. The good news is that most of the repairs needed were non-structural in nature. The bad news is the construction estimate is about a million dollars. So Walker has prepared draft plans and specifications for the project. It's our intent to finalize design with our consultant and bid this project and commence work in March of two thousand twenty-one. The community rating system, as you know, we were able to finish that report. The council passed that and we were able to maintain our Class Seven status, which uh, allows for fifteen percent reduction in flood insurance for the premiums of the Long Beach residents. The City of Long Beach, Nassau County Waste Water Treatment Plant Divergent Project. This is the project where we are uh, going to pipe across uh, Reynolds Channel, convert our wastewater treatment plant into a pump station. And the county at that point will take over our uh, our collection system, our lift stations out in the field and the pump station. And we will be left with about four acres of developed land down there. Um, our share of the cost is about eighteen millions. The overall project is going to be about ninety-five million dollars. Uh, we've already received twelve and a half million dollars in grants towards that eighteen million. Uh, we continue to have bi-weekly meetings with Nassau County and their consultant, Hazen and Sawyer and Arcadius. Uh, the design package for the temporary pump station and the permanent pump station is a hundred percent complete and will be put out to bid by the end of the summer. The force main design, which is the main that will go from the pump station across Reynolds Channel through the Hacksx to the Bay Park Treatment Plant. Uh, that's at about thirty percent complete design. Project's moving along very quickly. Uh, the consent order requires that we finish this project by June of two thousand twenty-four. At present, the predicted date for this completion of this project is August of two thousand twenty-three, which is well ahead of the consent order. Installation of the Enclosed Open Air Treatment Basement at the Water Purification Plant. Uh, we had additional funding appropriated in the two thousand twenty-one capital budget. And this work will, is being finalized by a consultant and the project will be bid and construction will begin in March of two thousand twenty-one. The secondary digester cover replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, one of our two digesters, when moving sludge from one digester to another for a cleanout, uh, the leaf valve on the one cover of the tank, the steel cover, failed to open and the cover collapsed. Um, the DEC is insisting that we replace this cover at a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars. We, with the plant only going to be running for the next two years, it's, we can more than easily operate on one digester. So the consultants that are working with the county have agreed to help meet with us and the New York State DEC and see if we can convince them that this project is unnecessary. If we're able to convince them, we will be able to take that six hundred thousand out of the capital budget. Um, Downtown to Boardwalk, this is the Edwards Boulevard Project. As you know, that project was bid, came in at three million dollars. When we have a million dollar grant and a million dollars allocated in our capital budget, we reworked the project by removing uh, all the work south of Broadway with the exception of the bike lanes and the bike lane signage. Removal of all landscape items, tree shrubs, et cetera. Uh, and removal of test pits for the water main offset items. Uh, we determined that we would be able to, to not have to offset around the water mains with the drainage. Uh, and remove the permeable pavers on Beach Street. So uh, by doing this, we went out to rebid and this came in at two million sixty-six thousand. As soon as the New York State Department of Transportation approves the bid, we will be coming to the city council with, for a resolution to award the project. We anticipate construction will probably commence in September of this year. Uh, the Walks Utility Upgrades. Additional funding was appropriated in the two thousand twenty-one capital budget for this project. Currently, one point seven eight million is allocated. Uh, this will be to undertake Phase One and Two of the project, uh, which is approximately one point seven million dollars. Uh, so we'll be, we'll be finalizing the design for the water mains and sending this to uh, the Health Department for their approval. Under this phase, new water mains will be installed on Walnut and Olive between New York and Lindell Boulevard. All homes uh, that are serviced off these thoroughfares will be transferred to the new mains. All remaining homes will be addressed in Phase Three. So it's going to happen in Phase Three is that the services will be run from these new mains into the walks by sidewalks. And then we'll eventually be able to kill all the live four-inch water mains behind the homes, take them out of service, which will make it a little safer for the homes there from leaks and what have you, and give them a better, give them much better water service and water pressure. Um, and then once that's done, we'll be able to move in the fourth and fifth phase, which is to replace the sewer lines behind the homes. We can't have, the easement's not big enough behind the homes to have both the water main and the sewer main. Years ago, they could do that. Now you have a ten-foot separation requirement. Uh, the next several projects are all FEMA Public Assistance Program Hazard Mitigation Projects. Uh, these are all paid for by FEMA and these are all in various different stages by our three consultants. Uh, first one is uh, for the ICE Arena. This is a five hundred thousand dollar project. We'll replace the front entry doors with floodproof units, install stoplog systems in front of all remaining doors, replace windows with flood resistant units, seal all its exterior penetrations, fortify the exterior wall surfaces by wrapping the building with a fiber reinforced polymer material. Uh, the wrap will receive a waterproof coating as well. Install sump pumps, install backflow preventer or sanitary sewer line. As part of this project, we will be repairing that uh, settlement on the east side of the building. What's happened, the east side of the building, uh, the, the steel deteriorated so badly that the weight of the steel is on the doors and you can't open any of the doors on the east side of the building. Uh, that design is about ten percent complete now. This, uh, we have a public assistance hazard mitigation plan for the Martin Luther King Center. Uh, we've been approved in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars to perform the following work. Uh, strengthen the masonry wall through the insulation of ground into the masonry block. Strengthen the corrugated steel walls through the application of a fire re-sourced polymer wrap and waterproof coating. Having a similar problem on the metal portion of that building that we're having at the ICE Arena. Uh, installation of flood resistant exterior doors, installation of backflow prevention devices on the sanitary sewer system so you don't get sanitary sewer backing up in a, in a high flow time. Installation of sump pumps. Uh, we also have a Hazard Mitigation Plan Project, which has been completed at the West End Community Center. Uh, that was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar project. And this was a stoplog system at all points potential water infiltration around the perimeter of the West End Community Center, including windows and doors. And that project was completed in June. The next eight, and I'll just refer to these as HMPs now instead of State Hazard Mitigation Plan over and over, is the Animal Shelter. We've been approved for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars to perform uh, work at the Animal Shelter. Again, it's replacing doors, floodproofing, all similar type things, uh, sealing exterior penetrations, installing backflow prevention devices on the sanitary sewers. Uh, we have a, a Hazard Mitigation Plan or an HMP for City Hall, which has been approved for one million dollars. This was held up a little bit by SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. They felt that our building, City Hall, was of historical significance, believe it or not. And so they approved an additional fifty-eight thousand for that study. That draft report has been submitted to uh, SHPO and we're just waiting to hear from them. And once they, they find the report is acceptable, then the consultant will finish the uh, design for that hazard mitigation project. This is the largest hazard mitigation project we have is a hundred and fifty West Pine Street Complex. That complex houses sanitation, street maintenance and uh, beach maintenance. Um, and all the equipment for those, those departments. Uh, so we were granted a little over three million dollars to perform that work. And that design is fifty percent done. And again, this is to flood proof the entire complex, install stoplog systems, install sump pumps, and they're going to be removing the interior concrete slab to prevent upheaval. One of the concerns there is the slab is kind of free-floating now. So if you get high groundwater and ground underneath the foundation, you could heave that, that floor. So uh, and there'll be an emergency generated to power the facility and vent the catastrophe. So that gives us the opportunity to uh, to protect all our equipment in a storm. Uh, and so that when it's time to respond, uh, we'll be able to respond. Uh, we have a six hundred and thirty-eight thousand HMP for the Water Purification Plant. This is mostly to address all the remote wells that feed water to the uh, to the uh, uh, main treatment plant. This will raise the electrical control systems, put in submersible pumps that, that can run underwater uh, so to keep our water system moving. Uh, we have not got the response back yet from FEMA on this as to the acceptance of our project. Uh, you know, this, the type of project we, we decided to do. Uh, we also have one for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, that was awarded, but we're holding off on that because if, that's a six million dollar project. Uh, but if we go through with, if the county is able to convince FEMA that there has a mitigation plan of taking the plant and converting it to a pump station and transferring that flow to uh, Bay Park, satisfies, we will not need that money. So, uh, we have uh, an on-call sewer maintenance contract, requirements contract for a hundred thousand in the capital budget to do sewer main lining with national water main cleaning. We're just waiting for a sewer main that's having problems before it gets to the point that it's collapsing and then we'll be able to do some of that work. Uh, City Hall Maintenance Repair, that's uh, was put in the capital budget this year. This is to re-point and replace lentils on the, on the uh, on the city hall. We have a lot of leaks coming through the building and until we stop the main structure from leaking, it's really difficult to repair anything inside the building. So that's an important project. Uh, then we have the removal and replacement of the one million gallons uh, water storage standpipe. Uh, that, the plans to take down the standpipe are well underway. As a matter of fact, we're going to be advertising for bids on July twenty-third. Bids will be due back August thirteenth. And uh, we will award that at the first meeting in September, which I believe is September first. Um, that will take down the, the steel pipe and make room to then do the design for the uh, for the permanent water storage tank that will be putting up a new one million and quarter gallon tank that'll have full use. The standpipe, we only get about thirty, forty percent of the use because once the water lowers in that thirty, forty percent, the pressures go down and you really, it doesn't provide enough pressure. Um, the new tank is going to be about eight million dollars. We put in for a grant last year at the request of Senator Kaminsky. We did not get that grant. However, we think we might have a better chance to get it this year. Now we give us up to three million dollars of that cost for that tank. I think that, that project is probably one of the most important projects and for the water system. Uh, we have an LED street lighting upgrade program going on. This is being funded by uh, NIPER, which is New York Power Authority. Uh, we have about seven hundred and fifty out of our eighteen hundred lights already LED. When this project is done, a hundred percent of our lights will be LED, which will lower our costs to uh, to LIPER and to uh, PSCNG. Um, we pay by the type of fixture. So each time you lower the, the water uses a fixture, you pay less for that fixture. Uh, we have a grant of a hundred and sixty-four thousand for a salt storage dome. This is to build a dome over our stockpile for street salt and sand. Uh, we lose a lot of that salt and sand now uh, when there's rain events. Uh, and quite frankly, I don't know how we have not had a dome over it for the last thirty-something years. This is a DEC requirement. Uh, we're going to be putting a new pool liner at the Recreation Center. We just uh, hired an engineering firm uh, for six thousand dollars who did the last liner. So they had all the specs, so we were able to save a lot of money. Uh, this is rim, rimkinist engineering and uh, hopefully we'll get that in before the pool opens up. And then there's several miscellaneous projects. We replaced the clock at the Long Island Railroad Station, which uh, former Assemblyman Wiesenberg donated. Uh, the Boardwalk Street Lights. Uh, Sternberg had provided all the retrofit kits. Uh, however, with the retrofit kits, there's a problem taking a pin out of the light. Uh, so they got to go back to the drawing board. We just sent two of the lights back to them to show them what the problem was. We did a video, we showed them what Wells Back was facing when trying to remove the pin so they could put the new attachment on. Uh, so they're going to work on that. So they're going to work on that. We've been doing a lot of masonry work.
John, can I just interrupt one second regarding the Boardwalk lights?
Yes.
Did they give you a date of any kind?
Well, we had
Did they give you a date?
Yes, it's, if Wellsback can install about, if the kit worked, Wellsback would have been able to install about three lights a day.
Right.
And what they did was they've delivered us 25 lights and 25 kits already. And they're in storage and back of City Hall. But the problem is Wellsback can't get this pin out. The pin is made of stainless steel and the fixture is made out of aluminum. And what's happened, the dissimilar metals, they fuse together. So they asked us to send them two, two of the samples we're having trouble with. And then they're going to see if they can come up with a fix for that. Once they come up with that, we'll start installing them. It's probably going to take, based on the number of lights that have to be replaced, it's probably going to take a good month to get them all replaced. We're going to start down at Lindell because that's the area that's missing most lights next to each other, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If you notice, if you notice, there's a lot of masonry work going on around the parking malls on Park Avenue. We're trying to clean a lot of that up. We had done a couple of overlays in several of those parking lots. A lot of the brickwork and concrete work was uneven and trip hazards. So we've been slowly doing that under our masonry work contract. As you know, recycling was reinstituted on Wednesday, June 10th. We'll be reevaluating that again. City Hall elevators. We had approved the purchase order back in October of 2019 for all the parts in the amount of $186,000. We expect those parts in now. The company went through a couple of ownership changes. We expect those parts in now in the next month, and then the installation work will start. Each elevator is going to cost about $80,000 to get up to speed then on top of that. Just some information, in terms of the GOSA projects, so people realize, well, we don't see it in the budget because it goes into revenues. Salaries are reimbursed for Rita Butler in my office, Joe Fabrizio, and Brooke Anderson for any work they do on the GOSA projects in terms of administration work. And on FEMA projects, the salary of Joe and Phil Mypon is reimbursed for any work they do related to FEMA projects.
Can you explain the process, John, of how that works? Do they, do they take, do they do timesheets daily like a lawyer?
They, we have a timesheet that FEMA requires, one timesheet we have to use, and GOSA requires another type of timesheet we have to use. And each project, each time they spend on that, in a particular work order or PW, they code it to that project. They put in the hours and time they spent on it, their salary, and plus their overhead. And then that gets all calculated and submitted to FEMA. They will call us and go through it with us, and we go line by line, and then they make the reimbursements.
And who from the, and who from the city signs off on those, those timesheets?
Okay, well, Joe signs off on the final ones from all of them. Then they come to me, and then I sign off on them and send them to FEMA. There's a whole form we submit with them.
Can someone else from the city besides you sign off on them, like Ina or Donna?
Well, they could, but they wouldn't be familiar with the work they did. I'm the one that's familiar with the work they did.
Maybe that's an internal process we can talk about with Donna.
Do you have an issue with me signing off on it for some reason, or?
I, my issue, I don't have an issue. I am looking for checks and balances. So I know that whoever has fiduciary responsibility for this city is signing off on those timesheets. And that's Donna or Ina.
Okay, and then we are going to become, we have, we had issued contracts to L.K. McLean, the Verkman Bottalucci, and Cameron Engineering for the 11 Hazard Mitigation Projects that are going on. That contract was for two years. Each one of those projects is in various stages of design and inspection services that are, you know, already, that, so we're going to be asking on July 21st just to extend their contracts for another two years. Because it doesn't make any sense to change engineers in the middle of a project. And then I guess we now are going to discuss in the canal issue with the canal project. When we started the bulkhead with the down on the canals, the three canals in the east end, people had built a lot of things on those canals. They built gazebos, fences, shrubs. So we, we found a little history that Rob Grab, one of the former Commissioners of Public Works, had put together on there. So right now, everything has been removed so that the contractor could do his work to put the put the bulkhead in. And, and that required work on both sides, on the water side and the, and the land side. So all those things have been removed at the owner's expenses, and now people want to put stuff back. Thing is, that's, it is public land, and there's really no method for them to put that stuff back. I mean, there's no cruel process. They're asking me what they can put back, and really, we need to make some decisions. So just to give you a little history. And this was a report Rob had done in 2004. So the city had installed new bulkheads and steel bridges in, on all three of those canals, Saracen, Ominet, and Hagan from 1966 to 1970 work, '71. At a May 5, 1970 city council resolution authorized a 10-year lease for adjoining property owners of $1 a linear foot per frontage a year. So in other words, if you had 100 feet of property facing that property across the street from you, you paid $1 a foot, you paid $100 a year in a, in a, in a lease-type arrangement. In December of 1971, resolution authorized city to seek an assessment to be applied to the adjoining property owners on top of that for the bulkheads to side in the fencing. The total local improvement was valued at about $377,000, and a 6% interest rate was applied. That equated to an annual charge of about $27,120 in interest to be paid in 30 installments between November 30, 1972 and November 30, 2002. It was, and we couldn't find any information, Rob couldn't either at that time, as to what, how it was apportioned among the various property owners. The leases on the properties was renewed by Council Resolution Number 16280 on June 17, 1980 for another 10-year term. Had a dollar a linear foot fee was retained. In 1987, the city retained the services of George Campbell Painting Corporation and added an epoxy surface to the steel bulkhead at a cost of about $600,000. This was done to defer any corrosion to the steel, and, but the homeowners were not assessed for that. The city adopted a new waterway structure ordinance on March 2, 1993 to establish maximum encroachment width on each waterway that a homeowner can install docks, piers, et cetera. Basically, such structures, including the width of a vault, cannot exceed out further than 1/3 the width of the canal. Apparently, the lease was not renewed in 1990, and residents have not paid any fees on that property since 1991. There's some other relative and issue, relevant issues. There were no warranties on the steel bulkhead. And replacing at that time the structures in the near future, about 10 years, was projected to be about $4 to $6 million, which is actually pretty close to what it came out for just two canals. So basically, we're probably off by about $3 million there. The canals all need dredging. They need a dredging, then they still need dredging, and that's, you know, quite an, going to be quite an undertaking. So I guess we're at a point now where people want to put things back on their thing. So we, there's 54 properties there. So do we want to allow people to just use it again without really any rules or regulations? Or do we want to have a lease with them? Do we want to consider selling the property to them and putting it on the tax rolls? Bringing in, you know, a one-time revenue source and then putting it on the tax rolls? So these are just some ideas and things that the council will need to review and, and see what they think is the best way to proceed.
John, this is Liz. I just have a quick question regarding the dredging portion.
Yes.
That, that, that's a DEC issue?
That's a DEC issue. It gets very complicated.
You don't have to say another word. Thank you.
So, John, if I, just so I understand correctly, so there was apparently, back in the earlier days, there was a nominal fee assessed. Hasn't been done since the early
It was a dollar.
Right.
A dollar.
So, so a homeowner that puts a dock and puts their boat in there is using city property for free?
Well, they, they have permits for, most of them have permits for the DEC and the Army Corps and the town of Hempstead for dockage in the, in the canal. And the only really thing they need now because of the height of the bulkhead is a stairway to get up to the top of the bulkhead because it's much higher. But there's other things they've been doing on it. I mean, you should have seen some of the things people had on there. I mean, there was like somebody's, I bet you somebody spent $100,000 on brickwork and everything else on one of them.
Well, I, but what I'm getting at is, and I get because over the years, it's just people, it's kind of squatters kind of thing.
Right.
But, but somebody, we, I guess we've just kind of allowed them to use it as dock space at no cost.
Right.
Whereas if they went to a marina, they're paying, you know, probably a 20-foot boat pays a couple of grand a year for, for dock space somewhere.
Right.
And, and yet, where, where maintaining all this at the city's expense, correct?
Yeah, well, except this bulkhead was paid by GOSA. That's
Well, yeah, but I mean, generally speaking.
John, just if I could interrupt one minute? Just to give you, give you an alternate thought too, is on West Bay, the people on West Bay paid what was called a gate fee. And I don't know if they're still paying. They used to pay like $1,000 a year to have a gate fee so they had access to the canal.
Okay. Would it be possible, and I know it might not just be you specifically, to put down some different options which could range from just continue the way things are through leasing, selling, assessing, whatever? Could you come up with some options for us to, to look at?
Absolutely. And just so you know too, I don't think this would be very controversial with the residents. A lot of the more outspoken residents down there have all told us they would be willing to either lease the property or buy the property. So they don't have, you know, it's not going to be a controversial thing where if we come in and say, hey, to continue to use this, you're going to need to, you know, either lease it from us or, and we should have some regulations too in terms of, you know, what they're allowed to do on those properties and what they're not allowed to do, you know, unless we sell it to them.
John, I'm sorry, Mr. Benzo. John, do you know of hand any other municipality that has something similar? I know it's, I'm putting you on the spot, but it's
The only other waterfront community I worked for was Freeport, and I was only doing the water and sewer then, so I didn't really get involved in the canals there. But I could check around with some of the other towns that have some of the other villages that have canals where people might have private property. But I'm, I'm just thinking of my time in Freeport. I never remember seeing, I mean, every canal was backed by homes or businesses that were off a public street that I can recall.
Because the town has, is, is jurisdiction of the water. We don't have that. We just have the jurisdiction of the property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I guess whatever we do has to be consistent from property to property. So we can't have, if, if it comes to a point where there's an assessment or something, you can't have one person paying it and not another. It would have to be consistent across the board.
This is Michael Ory. Wasn't this an issue why the bulkheading that worked that was done could only be done with federal money because the other side of the canal was deemed private property because that was in the rear of a person's backyard?
That, that's why, Mike, that was why it was moved. The original CR Committee was to do all public and private bulkhead on the Bay Side. First of all, there wasn't enough money allocated to do that. And secondly, doing, spending money on private property became problematic in terms of work easements. You'd have to have, you know, I think at the time, there may be 340 properties. You'd have to have work easements for each one of them, which just would have chewed up the cost. And in addition, created problems later. You'd have to maintain those easements because it would not be bulkhead-owned by the homeowner anymore.
West Bay Drive, residents there have to cross a street onto a grassy area. Currently, they have to climb stairs to a gate, which is, the lock is provided by the homeowner, then to their dock to get to their boat if they have one.
Right. They have not built any structures on that, that public property.
Correct, and that's the big difference right there.
Between here and the canals, yes.
Okay. You had mentioned that the residents there would be interested, and that would be a lease based upon square footage?
It's interested in either a lease or owning the property, you know.
And again, John, this is Liz. How many, how many residents are we talking about? How many homes?
It's 54 pieces of property.
Okay, thank you.
54? Okay. Just on that one canal or is it on the canals?
On all, that's all three canals.
All three, okay.
Now, remember, we're only doing work on two of the canals. So on the third canal, which is the last canal in town, none of those properties were disturbed, and people have things built on it, so. So we'd have to approach them too, you know, right? And, and again, when I say the people we've talked to, the most outspoken people, there's three or four in each one of those canals that, you know, voiced their opinion to us. So that's not a, to say that all 54 people are in favor of that, but just, it seems to be not, you know, a big issue.
All right, so it sounds like if you could maybe put some scenarios together for us to consider, and then we could reconvene and see how we might want to proceed on this.
Sure.
Until we might want to get input from, obviously, some of the 54 property owners as well.
President Benzo, I just have a couple of questions on his, like, 10 pages of projects. The one MLK Center was listed on here as item number 16.
Right.
Work there. I know there was a prior discussion about that center and the work and other things. Is any of this, all of this work is in the design phase now? What, the TNC, the MLK Center, I'm sorry?
Yes, that work is under design now.
Okay.
And again, this is a Hazard Mitigation Project will be refunded by FEMA.
Got it. The, I just want to move on to West Bay Drive now. The area between Magnolia and Laurelton, when I've driven that street, it just seems like a dip in the road or the road. And you probably waited for this project to be completed. But is that road being looked at by Brooke and Joe Fabrizio? And it's not the entire road. It looks like a section of it that just seems to have a dip in it.
What they're doing is they're going through the report we have from '86. They take out all the roads that have been completed, and they start with the worst-rated roads to see if they're still deteriorated or, you know, if there's been any changes. I don't know specifically if they'll look at that particular road because it sounds like just a spot. But that might be something we can do a spot repair on if there's a dip. And you said that's between Magnolia and Laurel?
Yeah, it's more closer to the Magnolia Boulevard end of that road when you're, you're exiting. I think it's like two, you go from Blacktop maybe to concrete or something. It, it just seems that way to me. But that's just a question I have.
Take a look at that next week.
Thank you. And then could you discuss, if you know briefly, Grand Boulevard and West Beach Street, and then Grand Boulevard and West Olive? It would seem like to be an emergency work that was needed. It was done, and I think it's over with. But do you have any knowledge at all what was going on?
Which, and which favor was paid?
It was Grand Boulevard and West Beach Street, and then they moved over to Grand Boulevard and West Olive. And I seem to think there was maybe a sewer issue or a water issue in that area. It may have happened when you were, you know, away on vacation. So it seems to have been remedied. I just don't know if there's going to be a resurfacing of like more follow-up work. And the reason I'm saying this is because that's a bus route for N33 in the Long Beach. And I just had noticed that there was a lot of, you know, zigzagging of vehicles and buses.
Okay, that could be, if they did do a repair, it could have been a gas repair. It could have been a water repair. What they generally do Uh, what they generally do is they do a temporary patch.
Right.
To allow for settling, and then they come back and do the permanent later. But, uh, I'll check that location as well.
Yes, thank you, John. It just seems to be okay. I just didn't know what the. Um, the pool liner.
Councilman Deloria?
Yeah.
On that one, I, just so you know, so Commissioner Miranda doesn't have to get back to you on that one. That was a water main break behind one of the houses. They've patched it and replaced it. And what they're doing is putting, um, other sort of, and this Commissioner Miranda would know better than technical terms than I. But they're putting, you know, relief valves and other shut-off valves in different places.
Oh.
Now you don't run into the same problem of an entire block or an entire section getting shut down. Uh, you know, with very old pipes in the walks like that, uh, that you would sustain damage for a long time.
John, you're just.
They're, they're. They're patching that up and it's just about done.
Yeah, they're putting in, uh, inserting new valves so that they can make a shutdown for future repairs.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda.
One last question. Um, the boardwalk lights. Um, I noticed when I was down on the boardwalk, New York Avenue in the restroom, it appeared from a visual, because I wasn't there tonight. Um, if those lights are working. And the reason I'm thinking about this is, um, you know, access, New York Avenue is an access point, as is Neptune. And I just was con- concerned that there's adequate lighting after this thing gets lit up and by the end of July. That's all.
Yeah, Michael, there are lights that go on that bathroom also. Those, that's part of their electrical work.
Good.
The exterior lights on that, that building.
Okay.
Okay.
The one thing I want to say is, the one thing I want to say is, um, uh, Mr. Miranda, thank you and your team for all of your work. And now everyone can see how much money we bring in and grant to get a lot of work done within the city. So thank you and thank your team for us.
I will.
Okay, uh, so let's move on.
That was a very thorough history lesson.
Thank you.
Sure was. All right, I guess, uh, I think we're gonna hear from our corp counsel and Mr. McNally. Uh, so take it away.
So this is just another item that, um, we wanted to get some direction from the council because we know it's something that they've had strong opinions about in the past. Um, i- it's really the direction that we want to take with good and welfare during, uh, the restrictions of meetings being virtual. Um, during the COVID era. So I, I think if you wouldn't mind, I'd ask Dave Frazier to give us a little bit of, uh, longer, very concise, but longer term history of how good and welfare is involved, evolved through our city and our city council. And then I'll sort of pick up the evolution of what's taken place since COVID hit and we had to go virtual.
Thanks. Basically, um, good and welfare was started with the council meetings back in seventy-seven. Um, and from seventy-seven through two thousand and twelve, it was, um, held at the end of the first meeting of the month. It was not held during the, uh, second meeting. Um, the way that worked out was, um, the meetings would then be balanced where the first meeting, there would be less items on the agenda. And then we would stack more items on the second meeting to kind of balance time-wise out both meetings. So they, they both, um, ran about the same amount of time. In two thousand and twelve, uh, a change was made and, um, previous to that, good and welfare, it, it was really just, just an option that the council took up. It was not something that was ever codified. It was not something that was ever required. Um, a change was made to the code. It was added to section two thirty. Um, the section was added that at the conclusion of every regular scheduled meeting of the city council, a good and welfare session shall be held, affording individuals present at the meeting an opportunity to speak and be heard before the council for a period of three minutes on matters relating to the city. So then that, that changed it from, um, i- i- an optional, um, session that would be at the first meeting to at every regular meeting. And that's the way it's been since two thousand and twelve.
And then, thanks, Dave. So now here we are in twenty twenty, um, COVID strikes and we need to go to virtual meetings. Uh, this council has always been very desirous of trying to be open and transparent and responsive to residents' concerns and questions. So a- at your directive, uh, we've tried to come up with throughout this pandemic in the same way that we've been, we've been shifting beach strategies. Um, you know, and, and Commissioner Regona talking about shifting police strategies. We've been shifting some of the good and welfare strategies as well, as well. Initially, it was submit comments by five o'clock the day of the meeting and we would have a response for you the night of. That became very challenging because we just don't have the staff and we don't necessarily have answers to questions in a turnaround time. Especially considering, you know, the voluminous number of, of responses that were questions or concerns that we got. We tried bumping that up to three, but ran into the same, the same sort of issue. So where we landed really since the middle of May is that we're asking people to, by five o'clock the day of the meeting or three o'clock the day of the meeting, submit questions, concerns, statements. This is supposed to be three minutes of uninterrupted time when we're, when we're face-to-face on matters related to the city. We have to date under that, under this, this paradigm and approach, we've, we've answered or responded to well more than a hundred and fifty resident questions since the middle of May. Uh, I think that probably, uh, dwarfs the amount of resident concerns and questions that have been answered in good welfare, uh, for at least the past several years. But we are now running into a situation where in, in normal times, we had an individual with a face and a body would walk up to a podium, say their name, maybe they give their address, maybe they don't. They state their opinion on something. They, they raise a concern with the city. Uh, i- if they got out of hand, they'd sort of, you know, be gavelled down, uh, you know. Past presidents, you had, uh, Len Torres who said, you know, decorum, 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 maintain decorum. Um, but in the, the digital age where we are trying to get our residents' answers to questions or address statements or even give them, you know, a, a platform. And what we've done with all the questions is in, in advance of the subsequent meeting, we've, we've responded to each of the questions, listed the original question and put them up on the city's website. We are, we are now in a time where, quite frankly, at least half of the emails we are getting are from uh, anonymous addresses where, you know, when you come to a city council meeting, you have no presumption of anonymity. Uh, half of the questions we are now getting at this stage of the game are very clearly coming from anonymous email addresses. They are not even so much questions or concerns as commentary or accusations. Um, so we're, the productivity of how we're currently doing good and welfare is a little bit challenged. For those that, uh, have real questions or real concerns, we are, we are giving that venue and doing our best to provide those residents with answers, but we're, we're running into limitations during this sort of digital phase of life right now where, quite frankly, the system's getting abused. Uh, i- if people were saying the things that they are sending in emails that they are expecting to be posted on the website, they would be shut down. Uh, it's a violation of decorum. They're raising up personal business. They're talking about individuals that are not elected officials. Um, talking about employment history of, of people that, you know, is just not fodder for civil discourse, uh, and such. So we, we've looked around at what other municipalities are, are doing and how they're handling it. Um, it runs an entire spectrum of, you know, everything is live and it's a, it's a Wild West to Hempstead is basically taking the questions and giving them to the council and calling that, you know, and never releasing them to the public and calling that, uh, good and welfare, which is obviously not a direction that we would want to go in. But, uh, you know, in the days ahead, we are looking for some direction from the council of where we want this to go. We know you've very much been desirous of being responsive and transparent and open. We're having working meetings a- as a council for the first time in, you know, however many years. Um, and again, we've, we've responded to well over a hundred and fifty, you know, resident concerns, questions, and it's all posted up on, on the website. So we're doing our best to, to navigate these waters, but have run into an issue where what's happening right now is, is being abused. Um, so really wanted the council, A, be made aware of that, obviously, but then B, help give us some guidance and direction on, on where you would like staff to go in, in mitigating the issue or making a path forward.
Yes, and just to add to that, I mean, I think John and I have discussed this and, you know, right now, I think we need a little direction on where we're going to go during COVID. But then overall, we would also suggest that this council, as we've seen, you know, with history, the way in which different councils have handled and which different administrations have handled, uh, good and welfare. They've kind of defined how they want it to be, either by charter amendment or by rule. Um, we would suggest that the council will evaluate how they'd like to handle it, whether they'd like a definition of good and welfare to be crafted and to be adopted, and whether or not they'd like to adopt, you know, best practices or policies and rules relating directly to board meetings. I think that is also something that the council should provide direction with and that, you know, obviously, my office, Clerk Frazier and, um, the city manager's office can work with you to do if that's something you would like to do. But that would be our suggestion.
Um, I guess I'll, I'll start. Um, okay, so s- summing this up, we, we have, we have a handful of trolls who are effectively ruining it for everyone else. And I don't think, um, I, I, I mean, good and welfare does, does serve a purpose. Um, I think we, we want to make it functional so it, it does provide a feedback, useful feedback, uh, viable feedback and, um, and gives people with legitimate concerns and legitimate issues, uh, a, a platform to, to make those issues known to the council in a, I guess to use the word Len Torres used to use and John, i- i- in, in proper decorum. Having, uh, uh, you know, obviously, I don't know if we see all the emails that come in. We've seen some. Um, there's some pretty inappropriate stuff coming in. Um, that, yeah, I don't think somebody would say it in public. Um, I think the school board, from what I understand, the school board had a very similar issue where they tried to do, uh, a, uh, virtual good and welfare using a comments feature. And they said people were just posting pornographic stuff and they had to actually just shut it down completely. Um, so it's, it, it's unfortunate. I guess people are bored, um, looking for something to do, looking for, uh, whatever. Um.
I, I liked when you, John, I liked when you actually read the questions and then answered them that evening. Um, I felt that that was more of an iterative process. People do have the right to voice their opinions and get answers. I think it's too much to ask the staff to actually get, gather all the emails submitted by three P M. or five P M. the same day. I think they should be secure by five P M. the day before the meeting. Have a chance to compile them. And then I, I liked when you read them out and then you, and then answered them.
Right. But from what my understanding is, what's going on is there's a few individuals, um, who are sending in these lengthy lists of ridiculous questions that have nothing to do with the city, some of them. So it becomes, it becomes, i- if somebody writes in about something that's got nothing to do with the city, but it's, it puts it in question form. If, if it's got nothing to do with the city, is it something we should even be addressing?
And that, and I think that's where, um, John and Stone are going to be intentional with good and welfare. As long as it's germane to the city, and then there's a certain sense of decorum that the reasonable person would ask, then I do think we have an obligation to read it. If it's something that has, uh, foul language, which is what I've read in several of the emails, which I felt very, uh, disheartening and demoralizing as someone who actually ran for office to represent the city. And this is the emails I get to read now. Again, pretty disappointing. But I still think that if people have a valid concern, and we can't judge valid, as long as it's germane to the city and is relevant and is vetted by a council, then, then I feel we have an obligation to read it in a real-time manner, ma- uh, fashion.
One of the things that we talked about is that we need to give a definition of what good and welfare means and what it means to ask a question that's about, that concerns the city. So that when we get these questions that are concerning other people's personal lives, people that may have done business with the city, we can respond by saying, is why we're in this age, that is not a good and welfare question. Uh, I don't think any of us have problems answering any of the questions that are legitimate questions. But lately, in the last couple of weeks, we've been getting people threatening, saying that you better do this or, um, making these long statements, uh, which has absolutely nothing to do with, uh, really the city. It's more either political or it's more their opinion.
Or responding.
Their three-minute statement, but it's not a good welfare question. And so no one has an issue with answering a question. Um, some questions, I've actually called the individual if they looked at their number, if I didn't actually understand their question, and we still posted the answer. Um, and some people give us good and welfare questions or suggestions, and we respond by saying, thank you very much. We will take them into consideration because it may be something that we hadn't thought of.
Answer that one or two council members work with, uh, staff to make a prescription on the scope of what, scope and objective of good.
You're breaking up, Karen.
Not muted. Um, so my question is, should one or two of the council members as a subcommittee work with the staff to identify the objectives and the scope of good and welfare so that therefore we can use that as our guideline when we have questions and answers going forward? Is that your, is that what you would like from the council?
Yes, that's a very good idea.
Well, I'll volunteer, but unless anybody else wants.
Up, I, I personally, I look forward to good and welfare. I think it's an opportunity for, I mean, I was up at every good and welfare, I think, for the last ten years. And, uh, at times I was making, I, I know that I was making statements that were happening on different issues about accessibility or just, just so that I would, that I've heard, thought that my voice would be heard. Not that anything ever happened, but it's important. And, but there are some emails, I've seen them as well, just inappropriate. And if it, if we need to weed that out so that the staff can function better and more efficiently, then let's, let's work on that and see how that works. It's, everything's a trial basis now during this pandemic. So that's just my two cents.
My two cents. If anybody can't get their point across, usually on a Monday or a Tuesday by three P M., it has to do with a topic that's on the agenda, which they've seen all weekend. Um, it's not fair to staff or to people who are receiving an email and expecting a turnaround and an answer right away to something that may have to be researched. There also could be a question of something that, or concern that comes in that day. Maybe something happened on the boardwalk. Maybe there was an accident somewhere. Maybe there was, uh, something that is not on the agenda, but could be answered. When you go to a situation that is toxic, inappropriate, uh, unreasonable, uh, over the top, and it's consistently coming in from the same email. uh, is there a way that that can be shut down? I don't know. But I think it's good that we should be able, I want to hear all people's complaints, but I want to hear them valid that are um, that we could somehow change or be aware of. But everything that's not valid, uh, I don't see the relevance. And that's why you have a professional staff that will go and decide. Um, this is, this doesn't qualify for good and welfare. That's my.
So, so. Can I maybe speak?
Yeah, that's the.
Okay, I've been trying to, please forgive me, been trying to uh, dive into these conversations all night. My connectivity is giving me issues and other times I was just cut off. However, as one of the only council members here who actually voted in twenty twelve to make good and welfare at every meeting, along with Len Torres and Fran Adelson, I believe it was Fran's idea actually. Good and welfare is crucial to the city and it should be at every meeting. And we got to find a way to incorporate it in, even in times of virtual.
Agree.
If there's that some of these good and welfare submissions are inappropriate, I trust our legal counsel will work with us to kind of parse out what is appropriate and what is not. So we're not bordering on censorship because that's also not the way to go.
Oh, definitely.
If we're gonna have a little subcommittee with two council members and they're gonna review it, I look forward to a legal opinion as to what can and cannot be excluded. But I think at every meeting, we, if people ask questions, we have to find a way to meet a medium balance, get answers out. Um, I understand with the pandemic, things had to be kind of done, it was a challenge. I think the community would understand that as well, but we have to take it upon ourselves to meet the challenge and find a way. I know that the city administration has been doing that and it could be overwhelming with everything else going on. But just my opinion, we need to have it at every meeting in some form. That was it.
Now, I agree with you completely, Scott. I I'm not looking to censor anyone. It's, it's just the, the emails that come in that are just berating people are not, they're not for public consumption. It's not for.
My comment about censorship isn't aimed at any individual or any comment that was made tonight. I'm just saying it in the broads, you know, spectrum of things that that's the balance between what is actually appropriate relating to city matters.
Right.
Versus what is pretty much a unilateral attack by what, um, I think Council President Bendo described as trolls with anonymous emails, doing it to not only incite, but also to waste city employees' time, which I know is harmful.
Correct.
It's simply unfair and it's, we have to find the balance. So that's why I'm looking for the legal opinion to tell us where we could start with that.
And I I I'd also just mention that just because somebody asks a lot of questions doesn't mean we have the right to single them out and not answer them. The thing is that we have to have a policy that we apply judiciously and fairly across everyone so that no one is singled out for for anything. And I think under that justification, then the those negative and completely inappropriate, uh, degrading, berating, demoralizing questions will be omitted consistently.
I I think that's what we're looking for, Councilwoman. I mean, you know, on a staff level, we are not afraid of criticism. Um, you know, we're not, we're not afraid of looking at something a different way throughout the budget process. We took comments from a lot of our residents and incorporated it into amendments in the budget. In our most recent dealings with Engel Berman and the I D A, we've done the same thing. You know, we've had people express concerns about can they, can they turn this from, you know, condos into apartments afterwards? If it doesn't flip out, we've approached all those subjects in our conversations as well. So we're more than happy to take comments, criticisms, constructive, you know, and innovate and really try and make, make it work for the betterment of the city. Um, but the kind of stuff that we're talking about is we're just looking to, what is that measuring stick? What is that even, you know, even rule that we can apply so that when it really is just an attack and a personal attack um, on people that um, really, you know, it's, aren't even involved in our city and our city government, you know, to drag some folks through, it just doesn't, you know, it doesn't pass muster and it's not what anyone, I think, is the intent for. So we're just looking for that guidance and that that.
Yes, I mean, I think that a committee format with staff and myself or a member of my office to come up with, as John basically said, kind of a guideline that the council supports, I think, is the best avenue since it is the council that runs the meetings and has, you know, the legislative authority to promulgate kind of rules. So I I think that would be, I think that's a great approach and I I think that would work best. What we, you know, kind of threw out, threw out there of having maybe two council members and staff kind of come up with some general rules or, you know, or definitions.
You could work that, it's switching up the council people, so it's just not always the same people. Um, and hopefully, you know, in the next couple of months, we, we'll be up to change some more things and as the technology catches up a little bit more, we'll be able to have comments with, with video chatting with other people as I do in other meetings as well.
Well, once we go back to live meetings, this issue will probably diminish.
Correct.
Some so, and and hopefully that will be sooner rather than later. Uh, but in the interim, I guess, I mean, if if you're looking for a volunteer for uh, for a couple of the council people to help with this, I I'll help along with Karen. I guess Liz, you sounded like you might be willing.
I think we should, you know, if we know during.
That's fine.
Every time you could switch off, it, I guess, this is.
I I I mean, you and I, Liz, were very, very prolific speakers at good and welfare over the years.
I want other people to be as, just as prolific. And I don't want anyone not to be able to s- to stand up and and say their piece.
No, and and we want to, we want to protect the people who are doing it legitimately. So, uh, so all right, so we'll do that. We'll.
Something to think about. Thank you, everybody, for that.
Yeah, we'll come back with a series of recommenda-, yeah, hopefully we'll develop a series of a policy or recommendations that we could all agree on uh, applying uniformly. Uh, I don't know if we have anything else to talk about. Uh, and it's getting late. I'm sure some people want to get the heck out of here. Um, so why don't we, uh, unless anybody's got any objections, why don't we call it a night and uh?
I got the two items I need to discuss real quickly.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know that. Go ahead.
Remember, but we have to um, we have to end.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right. All right, so um, okay. Well, then uh, thanks, everyone, for participating and uh, have a good night.